Okay, let's call this city council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower. Mayor Potemperie-Popevsky.
Here.
And Mayor Rixley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We had a closed session and the city attorney will have some comments.
Mr. Mayor, the city council agenda has two items that were discussed in closed session this evening. Item number one was a conference with real property negotiator for the property identified. The city council gave directions to the city's negotiators, no final actions taken. Item number two is a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. And in that matter, the council received a report, gave direction, and also authorized a payment of eight hundred forty-five dollars towards litigation costs with the attorneys who are representing the League of California Cities in that defense fund. There's no further action reported this time.
Thank you. Next, we have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Brower.
Please stand and join me for the invocation. Dear Father, we thank you for the opportunity to get together and discuss the business of our city tonight and make the best decisions that we can for our community. We thank you for your guidance and presence and look forward to the deliberations that we will have this year. Amen. I plead with thee to declare the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, now comes the time for oral reports for the public to participate in any items not on the agenda. It's like we have a number of requests this time. I guess we can start with the ground rules. The comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and the total time is limited to thirty minutes. So it looks like the number of speakers will be well within the thirty minutes and if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, then we go up to that time limit. I would also advise that if people are talking about any items that are coming before the city council in the future, that you speak more generally to a topic and not specifically to an application that might be coming before us because if comments are made about a specific item before it comes to us as judges in our capacity as judges on issues, then it could be considered to be a violation of the due process rights of the applicants who come later. So if you get to specifics about an applicant and some of these flyers mention a specific applicant, then you run the risk of even if your way is obtained from the city council, then having a legal challenge based on not following due process. So that's just word to the wise. We do have free speech rights in this country. You can talk about anything you like, but it might not help your cause if you get too specific until the time comes where the project is directly before us and then we'll entertain whatever discussions need to come forward. But I think we'll start with Kendall Boyd.
Thank you. I'm the incoming president of Loma Linda Little League and I wanted to come and thank the council for your support for Loma Linda Little League throughout these years. And just to tell you a little bit about how some of your efforts really help us. If you're familiar with Little League, it's a private organization and they don't particularly like to give religious breaks. And so here in Loma Linda, we're essentially a Seventh-day Adventist league. And so we have a no playing on Sabbath policy. And so because of that, a lot of Adventist kids come from as far away as Ucaipa and Colton. And because they don't have to play on Sabbath, the other issue is Little League doesn't like kids from outside the boundaries to play in the All-Star tournaments. So it basically leaves these Adventist kids unable to play. But because of our facilities and the resources that you have put into maintaining our fields, the district really likes us to host tournaments. And so an arrangement that we've put together the last couple of years is we'll host tournaments for the district and this last year also the section. And they've been allowing our out-of-bounds Adventist kids to play and be All-Star eligible. And so that really is a direct result of how nice our fields look. And Mr. Bender there has donated a flagpole to our efforts as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for all that support. And I think this also brings in people from the surrounding areas that normally wouldn't come into Loma Linda, High Desert, and other surrounding areas. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and I'd ask you to please consider that something that helps out the community, so.
Mr. Mayor, I just might add to Kenny's comments there. It's certainly really what job staff is doing on a daily basis down there at the park is making a huge difference. I don't know if you guys have had the chance yet, but when it comes league time and tournament time, there actually is a mass of people coming into town that benefits us as well. So part of the credit is Kenny, your side and the Little League administration who are putting a very organized product, which I think they're also appreciating. So the environment, the organization, I think Little League is appreciating about our community. So our hats off to you as well. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Juan Sabate.
Well, Mr. Mayor and city council members, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Juan Sabate and I'm a resident of this city for the last twenty-seven years. It also happened to be that for the last twenty-two, I work in this city. And sometimes I'm going by bike to work and I have enjoyed some of the amenities of working and basically living in the same town. Anyway, given the later developments in this city and the upcoming issues that you will have to make decisions, I would like to propose that the city of Loma Linda adopt a strategic plan for promoting health. This strategic plan should include a vision and a mission. Why to adopt a strategic plan for a healthy city? I think it will provide a basis for a short as well as a long-term decision-making around economic development, zoning, and about many decisions that you have to do. But also, it will help for the well-being of those that live, work, and also recreate here in the city of Loma Linda. I think it will help you to be proactive about being a healthy city and just not reacting to the different opportunities or threats that come along. Why Loma Linda needs to adopt a strategic plan, I think there are many reasons. I'm just going to touch on them and others of my colleagues, I mean, are going to dwell more on them. One is because Loma Linda has a heritage on health. And this heritage has not necessarily been by city design. So I think it's about time that we think about city design on health. A second one is because nowadays, and there are social and political trends as far as healthy cities movement. As you know by my accent, I'm not from this country, I'm not from California. And the movement on healthy cities is not something local, is not something of this country, is something international. And Loma Linda is not on the bandwagon and I think it should be. And finally, because I think having a strategic plan for a healthy city will attract business that are according to this plan. So it makes economic sense from many points of view. I mean, we want to attract the specific types of business, we want to attract the type of residents here, we want to attract the specific things, and it has to be the ones that are according with health. And I think that makes a lot of sense. So based on all of these reasons, I not only ask you to adopt a strategic plan, but I'm also inviting you to work with us, a group of health professionals, public health professionals, that we have resources and specialties in helping you in developing in a conjoint fashion, I mean, the strategic plan, what is the vision and the mission for a city on this. So I'm not only asking you, but I'm urging you, given the importance of this for this city. Thank you.
Dr. Sabate? Would you be, as usual, you're articulate and you've carefully thought through what you're going to say. I appreciate that. Would you be willing to share a copy of your written comments so that they can be attached to the minutes and we can review them more carefully?
Very happy.
That was exemplary containment within your three minutes. Perfect. Good job. Next, we have a comment from Daniel Handyside.
Good evening to the council and to the mayor. I'll be even shorter. Going on lines of what my colleague, Dr. Sabate, said, we do have a heritage of health. It's a heritage that Loma Linda is incredibly proud of. It's something that we have advertised. We're happy to be the only Blue Zone in North America and that stands us apart. It sets us aside from a lot of other towns that are in the area. But unfortunately, this heritage isn't something that we designed. It's something that was gifted to us, possibly by the early people who founded Loma Linda and possibly by the cultural identity that is here. But it's something that we didn't set out. We didn't have a strategic plan to keep it. We don't, we still don't. There are other cities in California that have designated themselves as healthy cities. Loma Linda's not one of them. And these are things that shock me. I'm just finishing my first year working at the School of Public Health as a health educator. And it's scary to think that I'm in a city that prides itself on health, but we're not a healthy city. These are titles that we should grab. These are titles that we should own. We should have been the first city in California to be a healthy city. We should be pushing the envelope in all ways. And it's important that, as a city, we promote a strategic plan. Like Dr. Sabate said, we can't be reactionary. We can't just wait for something to come along. We need to say, we are a city that has a vision. We have a vision that is going to have sidewalks for our kids to walk on to fight obesity, to have food gardens where we have those of lower income can feed themselves and healthy diets. This is a wide-ranging plan. And as a city, we need to think, what are those items we want to do and how can we go about to achieve them? So I'll cut my time short. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Next is J.C. Belliard.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak here before the city council. My name is Juan Carlos Belliard, also known as J.C. I'm a professor at the School of Public Health. I've taught there for fifteen years and I've lived in Loma Linda for eighteen years. And as a public health professional, I'm very interested in seeing the direction and the vision of Loma Linda as a city. I'm also involved with Healthy San Bernardino. I've seen Healthy Ontario develop. And it's amazing that there are fourteen cities in the county of San Bernardino, even Healthy Adelanto, Healthy Apple Valley, Healthy Chino, Healthy Chino Hills, et cetera. There are fourteen cities in the county and we're not listed among those cities. What does it mean to be a healthy city? It's a city that designs its future and its health. Health doesn't happen by chance. If you just leave it up to market, the interests will sway in the way of the bottom line and not necessarily of the health of the people of that community. Healthy cities, for example, will look at retail food environment indexes to assess and evaluate a city's food environment. This RFI is actually, there's a formula to that and we could spend more time in the future looking at that, but it's the number of fast food and number of convenience stores divided by the number of grocery stores and number of produce vendors. So there's actually a formula that shows what the food index is. Research clearly shows that a high RFEI or an unhealthy food environment is associated with higher rates of obesity and diabetes. And this is, this comes from Policy Link and the UCLA Center for Health Policy Research. San Bernardino County has the highest of RFEI in the state of California of five point seven two. The lowest is Santa Cruz and Marin County. I would like to see our communities more like those counties up north. The city of San Bernardino has an eight-to-one ratio of unhealthy food outlets to healthy food outlets, eight-to-one. The county of San Bernardino has a six-to-one ratio and the state of California has a four-to-one. There are other cities that have taken proactive measures and I appreciate Councilman Daley at the last meeting, I was watching on TV, speaking about how we need to be less reactive and more proactive. And I think this is what visioning is for the city. And there are a lot of great options out there for us. And I'd just like to conclude with two points. One, I don't think the city needs to choose between health and profit. I think that's a false dichotomy. I think there's ways of making profit with healthy options. Number two, making the healthy choice should be the easy choice in our community. When you're in a hurry, when you're in between meetings, you usually grab whatever you can to eat at lunchtime. We need to create a community when, that when people are in a hurry or when they're here at the hospital, the easiest choice is the healthy choice. Thank you very
Just a question. I want to be sure I understood you. Did you say that among the healthy cities that you were noting, that San Bernardino is one of them?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess there's a, I have a bit of confusion. I'm trying to work, I'm trying to understand how San Bernardino can be considered a healthy city and Loma Linda is the only city in the Blue Zone and we're not a healthy city. There's an incongruence there that, can you help me?
Well, that's the irony. To become a healthy city means you sign up for the Healthy Communities program. And you have to show that you have a plan, a health plan, for the city. And as a city, we have not joined that group. And it's a growing group, not only across the state, but across the nation as well.
So for all we know, we meet the criteria of being a healthy city. We just haven't been proactively seeking that label and participating in the program.
Exactly. And even healthy cities around us like San Bernardino are considered a healthy city. As a San Bernardino, Healthy City-San Bernardino Coalition is looking to us as role models. So we're just missing that title. And like Dr. Handyside said, we need to own that heritage and be proactive about it.
These cities are self-proclaiming.
Yeah, it sounds like it's an aspirational title as opposed to an achievement of a healthy city.
And it, correct.
They aspire to be a healthy city.
And I think we need to aspire and not just sit on our heritage.
But do they have a Caduceus on their symbol?
Health starts in the community, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Sylvie Welhausen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak. Why now? Why do we come forward with this vision and this mission of a healthy Loma Linda? Why not a year ago? And obviously, the health crisis, the obesity crisis, the lifespan that's going, returning back down, and the numbers that have actually come to my attention, like the lifespan of the US is now seventy-eight or seventy-nine, but the city of San Bernardino is sixty-five. It's below some African countries. And we can kind of, obviously related to some of it is a crime, but mostly to chronic disease. And that's directly related to nutrition and the lack thereof. So why, personally, I came to Loma Linda and Loma Linda attracted me and my private practice because I'm in preventive health, clinical nutrition. So directly, your title as a Blue Zone and as a healthy medical community is the reason why I'm here. So I just wanted to emphasize that this vision and this mission can actually protect you in the future because it will be your label, your brand, and for further, I suppose, further special interest, let's say, that could come here and be against, you know, healthy Loma Linda, promote more unhealthy living. And it's just not only nutrition, it would be also, you know, the numbers of parks or the numbers of sidewalks and the actual architecture that would promote health. So it's not just nutrition. But obviously, nutrition is something we do three times a day. Unfortunately, I think a lot many people do it more than that. But it is very important. And I just wanted to say also, as far as the business aspect, you might be losing some, you know, some money for not allowing a convenience store or certain fast food to come in the city. But you would actually also lose business for losing your brand and losing, you know, people that would come in and practice here or people that would come in and live here. Because a lot of people are very comfortable with the fact that there's a lot of medical professionals here. So I just wanted to emphasize that I think this mission and this vision will actually strengthen us, strengthen your city, and would, you know, as elected official, it would be wonderful that you would support us in this aspect. Thank you very much.
Next is Eddie Hara.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Hara. Thank you, Mayor and city council, for this time. I'm the last in this series to wrap up what my colleagues have been saying. I came to Loma Linda in nineteen ninety as a student. I'm currently a faculty in the School of Public Health. And what I do is I teach students how to work with community groups and address and solve the challenges related to health that they're facing on a shoestring budget, actually, no budget. And it would be great to also have the city as a leader and a participant with not just having the heritage of health, but actually having a strategic plan and planning out that way to promote health. And as the previous speakers have mentioned, there's a movement, Healthy Cities Movement, and ironically, Loma Linda isn't, hasn't articulated their role in part of that movement. And so what my colleagues and I have done is we've expressed an interest in wanting to engage the city council, but not just the city council, just as J.C. mentioned, health starts in the community. So we also want to engage the whole community and be partners in this process because if it's just a city council vision or if it's just a vision of people in the School of Public Health, then it's not really a citywide vision. So this, the group that you saw here are part of a wider group that is eager to work with the city council to see how we can engage in a citywide process, a dialogue, to develop a strategic plan that includes a vision, a mission, strategy, objectives for achieving a real, to really promoting health actively and in a long-term fashion. And therefore, we request if we can be on the agenda, if this topic, you know, related to this topic, if we can be invited back during that time at an appropriate time, we'd be very appreciative to be invited. Also, we would like to plan some type of kind of town hall convening where we can, with residents, with elected officials, with health professionals, talk about what it means and what we envision as a community to be a healthy city. And as a community, it's not just residents, it's people that work here because people that work here eat lunch here, they go on, you know, they want to take a walk during breaks. People come here to recreate the hills or... So anybody that works, plays, recreates in the city, we wanted to engage. So those are our requests. And all this as a recommendation, as a urge to, where we urge the city council to really work on this to actually have and adopt a articulated vision, mission, strategic plan for a healthy Loma Linda. Thank you very much for your time.
Can we just have a show of hands of people that share this vision, that came for this reason today? If you could just raise your hands. Thank you very much.
I guess I'm turning to our city manager. We obviously have citizens that have put some careful thought into this and there's some energy. It's entirely consistent with the heritage of our city and institutions within the city. How do we proceed on this now? Is this referred to where? I'm a rookie, so I have an excuse for that.
Well, before we go much farther, there's one more speaker request and it may be on the same topic, I'm not sure, but M.J. Bunt?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm so pleased that we're talking about a vision because it was my impression that you would be voting yes or no on McDonald's tonight. I'm representing people who come from Riverside and from the surrounding area. For forty-three years, I've been going to lectures and medical services and your wonderful health food stores. And my foreign exchange students in Thailand and in Brazil, a friend in London said, "You live next to the famous Blue Zone, the oasis of health." And I said, "It's my hobby to take my friends to the health food stores." And I've been doing that for a number of years. I wanted to say that you have a model community for the world, for the nation, and urge you to open the door wider to discussing a vision for us. And as the chosen guardians of the community, I urge you to put health, the health of the families, and those of us like me who are lucky enough to come and visit, put that first. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last of my speaker requests. Are there any other speakers that would like to come forward? Okay, then we'll continue the discussion.
Thank you and good evening to each of you. I have been a resident here for only four years, so I may be more of a junior member of this city. But as a senior medical student, I have enjoyed studying medicine in this city. I spent one year here in the School of Public Health. And the great atmosphere of your community has lent to excellent educational experience. As many have mentioned here this evening, the Blue Zones of the world, we're fortunate to be one of them here in this community. And I would completely lend my support as a student and a young member of this community to developing the further plans, the visions, the mission statements to further develop this so that we can build a community around health. Food and poor nutritional quality is around us abundantly and we have to carefully design the community so that those who are at risk for not being able to make maybe the best choices have access to what is most beneficial to them. And if I could just, for teasing your appetite, if I may use that term, this evening, cite a few facts from the Journal of Nutrition here in two thousand cite a few facts from the Journal of Nutrition here in two thousand and nine. This is talking about, I think, the, I can't say the word directly, but the topic that we're all talking very dearly about tonight. And over a thirteen-year period with about, uh, just over five thousand, uh, pa- uh, patients follow up, uh, there, noticed that there was a statistically significant increase in weight, in insulin resistance, in, uh, waist circumference, in triglyceride levels, and a drop in your good cholesterol level. So, uh, with the establishment of certain food, um, facilities in communities. So I would encourage you this evening to think, uh, like our sign says, serving man with the medical symbol, uh, right into that as we continue to move forward, uh, into the future. Thank you.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Jonathan Thorpe, and address of one-one-five-five-two Poplar Street. That's of course Loma Linda. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you indicated when you introduced, uh, this part of our meeting, we are somewhat constrained by California laws to what we can do tonight. Uh, number one, under the Brown Act, which is the California Open Meeting Law, you cannot discuss or take action upon any item that's not on your agenda. You, you can receive public comment, and, uh, there can be brief questions to clarify the comment, uh, there can be direction to staff to look into the matter further or to agendize it at a future meeting. Uh, in particular, you can direct staff, uh, or he can do it on his own, to look into the Healthy City program and report back on that at a future meeting. It can be agendized for discussion at that time. Uh, the, some of the other restrictions that we're working under, though, include the due process issue that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city does have before it at this time a development application, which includes as one part of that project, uh, the possible development of a McDonald's restaurant. Uh, our concern as staff is that, we saw a flyer that specifically urged people to come to this meeting to oppose that project, and, and that would not be appropriate to consider or take any evidence on that matter tonight because it is not before you and you notice a public hearing for that purpose. In fact, as you mentioned, uh, if ultimately that project were to be denied, uh, an aggrieved party could attack that decision on the basis that you considered evidence, uh, tonight outside of the public hearing that would occur in the future. And so that's a due process issue. It's like the judge hearing the case before the parties all come to court on the appropriate day. So we're, we're bound by those rules. Uh, we're also bound by SEQA rules, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, which says that before you can adopt an ordinance or take specific actions such as a zoning code change, you have to go through the proper public hearing process and you have to do the required environmental review. So, um, tonight, obviously, uh, this is not on the agenda, the appropriate study and preparation has not taken place, hasn't been agendized for a public hearing, uh, there's been no SEQA review, uh, but you can ask staff to, uh, look into any particular issue of, on which you, uh, need further information, uh, you could ask that it be agendized in the future, uh, subject to, you know, the caveat that we cannot address a particular project outside of the, the appropriate time for the public hearing on that project. We'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Does anyone want to, um, instruct?
I guess the spirit of my comment was, uh, the proactive interest in investigating healthy cities and what that means and, uh, explore ways in which there's potential to incorporate health as a feature in our strategic plan. I, I do understand and am fully sympathetic to the fact that we can't act on anything tonight. I would, I didn't mean to imply that. But I think that, uh, when we have this kind of energy behind an issue, uh, my interest is if, is there's something that we can convey to them in terms of where does it go from here? And I think you've, you've clarified that, and we need to have some discussions and, uh, agendize it in the future so that we can have further open discussion about it. One option would be to agendize it for a study session rather than a formal, um, City Council meeting, um, because it, it's hard to schedule a, a hearing, um, what potentially could lead to legislation until you have an idea of what really is being proposed and what interest there is in the community to pursue a particular plan.
Okay, I'll make the direction to staff that we look into, there's a, two issues that were brought up this evening before us. One of them, which is clearly outside of an area we can discuss. The other was the mention of the Healthy Cities Communities, and I'll make a direction to staff to prepare a report on Healthy City Communities that can be brought back to us and agendized, uh, when that report is complete. Outside of that, I think that we should probably, unless there's further direction, that should be the extent of where we go.
The only thing I would personally add, I would like to see is hold a workshop in conjunction with, uh, looking at, uh, developing potentially, uh, the Healthy City designation. And, uh, we'll leave that up to staff as far as how to coordinate that, but I'd like to include that at least in my, my request to staff for future direction. Just one brief comment, again, the city attorney, um, has clearly enunciated that we can't have any broad discussions here, but I would simply like to thank the community for your wise counsel and the idea of a strategic vision. I think that is key.
I would just add, uh, three quick items. Uh, you talked a little bit about the strategic plan for the city. In essence, the city already kind of has that, it's called the general plan, so I would, uh, encourage you to kind of look into that and see what, what you can add to it. That's always a plan that can be amended at any time. Within the general plan, there's a called, a thing called the Development Code, and the city's in the process of adopting a new amended Development Code. I would urge you to look into that, and that is a public hearing process by which is being, if I'm not mistaken, it's going through the Planning Commission as we speak. And there might be things in there that you may propose that may relate to this particular issue. Um, my only other concern is just be wary, sometimes there's code words for a healthy cities, and, um, as being a member of a group that was concerned about some of the development issues in this town, uh, sometimes high-density developers will hide behind certain, uh, names, thinking that you're getting a good product, in the end, you're getting high-density, and that's something that this community was very much against. So I would caution you as you move forward and you study this to ensure that your group doesn't get hijacked by those who basically wanna pack Loma Linda with as many houses as possible, cause that's still happening as we speak, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, reiterate, uh, comments from Councilman Brower. We, uh, we experience some pretty lonely Tuesday nights in here, and it's really fun to have a whole crowd of people that are energized by an issue. So we've got other important issues, so please stay tuned, and, uh, I'm told that the televisions are working and the sound system's better, so, uh, uh, get involved in other issues as well. We really appreciate your, you taking the time this evening to come out and to speak to an issue that clearly is very important to you, and, uh, I commend you for it. Thank you.
And I would just add that we're here to represent you, and sometimes communication between yourselves and us gets bogged down because you deal with staff, so feel free to clarify any issues that you might want, because sometimes it's better just communicating with us. We don't, we not have the opportunity to speak to you directly at all things because we have some limitations, but if you feel that staff is not being proactive or communicating with you directly, feel free to let us know because they're here for you and they work for all of us. I just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that. Thank you.
And one of, one of the items later on the agenda is to review the charge and, uh, and activities of some committees. And I think after we have our workshop, this would be the kind of a thing that I think to keep it going would probably require a co- a community, uh, committee to drive the Healthy Cities, um, program and keep it alive and, and to advance it at all times. So you might wanna be thinking about, about forming a committee like that and volunteering for it. Now, uh, with regard to Mr. Belliard's comments, I, my personal calculation of our RFEI here is one point zero. Do you get the same number?
We haven't actually done the calculations yet. We haven't looked at all the meetings.
Cause I can think of three in each category and I can't come up with anything more, but, but...
That's a good, uh, public conversation.
Yeah. We're a pre- pretty healthy community so far by that measure, so...
You're welcome.
Yes. We, we thank you all for your comments, uh, and feel free to stay as long as you like. Uh, we stayed within a half hour. Congratulations, everybody, you did a great job. And one more comment.
My request, uh, you must remember, you like my advice, you might have viewership that I don't. I would like to stay in today.
We have some great reports tonight, but we won't put you on the spot.
And the most exciting comment will come right now, it's called the Consent Calendar. It's so exciting, we don't even talk about it, so...
I'll make a motion to remove the Consent Calendar for her.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any opposition?
I do wanna just have a quick question on an item.
Okay.
And it appears, one of the items is destruction of city records, and I'm looking at it and it goes as far back as, it kind of varies, I'm a little confused as to how far back are we destroying and are we meeting the, the rules of maintaining records? The finance department, so...
Yes, we are. Um, we currently abide by the state, um, retention schedule, and so, um, there's a guideline in there, I think it's the second attachment. It says it's a guide, and you go by how many years you're usually, what category.
I see, so it varies depending on the record, it's not just, okay, I follow you. Okay, thanks for clarifying that, thank you.
Yeah, I think the point is that it's older than a certain age, it doesn't matter how old. It's just that it's older than a certain age, you only have to keep it for, yeah...
In some cases, they're like current plus ten years, or in other cases, I mean, current plus three years, and it all depends on what they are, what type of records, and it's all how long they're gonna...
Okay, any other items to talk about? Nothing else? Okay. Then is there any opposition to the Consent Calendar? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll move to new business, committee commission reports. Our first one is Historical Commission.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Jim Ship, Chairman of the Historical Commission, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to give a, a small annual report on our actions. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, which is supposed to be up any time now. First couple of slides in that are a little bit texty, and after that, it gets more interesting and, and, uh, full of pictures, so... There we go. All right. Well, we are authorized under City Ordinance, uh, Chapter seventeen point three zero, and that includes some of our mission, which is to safeguard the city's unique cultural heritage and to encourage and facilitate public knowledge, understanding and appreciation of the city's historic past and unique sense of place. There are many more pages of reasons for a Historical Commission, but those seem to be the highlights. Current commission members are up there, and I won't read all of their names or, uh, their credentials, but, um, according to City Code, members of the Historical Commission are supposed to come from, uh, history professions, uh, architecture, um, knowledge of historic preservation, and also people who are just fluent in local history. So we're blessed to have a very good representation of people who are professionally involved in history or historic preservation, and also people who are descendants of longtime residents and they're of the historic families of the community. So I, I feel like we're very well represented with the nine members on the commission. The scope of our work is to advise and make recommendations concerning demolitions or major changes to structures over fifty years old. Um, these days with the economic slowdown, development, uh, Loma Linda University and the Medical Center are our main clients who come asking for permission to demolish, and in almost every case, that's, um, allowed or recommended on our part, it's called a certificate of appropriateness. Other times, uh, we'll request that they do certain studies, photographic, um, archives of the property before it's demolished. Uh, we also make recommendations concerning any development in the Historic Mission Overlay District, which you're familiar with. Uh, we are also tasked to acquire information about local history and educate the community about Loma Linda's history, and we're working hard to try to do that. We're guided by two chapters, uh, seventeen point three zero, which is the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and seventeen point three two, which is the Historic Mission Overlay District. We use the Secretary of the Interior's Guidelines for Historic Preservation, and also the laws of the State of California related to historic preservation. We use those as our guidelines and rules. Uh, we have nine unpaid members, all volunteers. Um, the City Council generally appoints members who have professional expertise or knowledge of history and historic preservation. Uh, a quorum for us is five members, and we've never failed to achieve a quorum at a regular meeting. Uh, I believe our attendance is exemplary, the commission members come when, uh, at all possible. There are, of course, some absences because of professional responsibilities, travel for their work, and vacations and illnesses. We have currently no vacancies on the commission. Past projects include the, um, Loma Linda Book, Images of America, published by Arcadia Publishing in two thousand and five. That was the commission at that time. Um, since then, we've lost two of our members, um, but they have been replaced and, and we have a regenerating commission as the years go by, but we're especially proud of that book and proud of the fact that it's often sold out at local bookstores. So that speaks well of the efforts of the commission. Uh, we've been holding an annual Loma Linda History Fair from two thousand and three to two thousand and ten, most recently, last year was the bicentennial of the San Bernardino Valley. This year, there is no history fair, uh, we took a, a sabbatical to regroup and also to prepare for another big history fair next year. Uh, we have been instrumental in the development of the Historic Mission Overlay District, the, the code, uh, seventeen point three two related to that, and also the development of the Heritage Park where we held part of the bicentennial last year. Uh, future projects, of course, we'd like to bring Heritage Park into full commercial uh, and community use. We'd like to see some revenue generated with some of the historic buildings being used commercially and professionally. And, uh, then we're looking forward to, uh, another big history fair next year in the fall of two thousand and twelve. Tom Achley of the Redlands Historical Society is working with me on a book about Mission School history, and, uh, at the time that the historic buildings of Mission School are finished and ready to reopen, we intend to hold, uh, at least part of our celebration there on that campus. So it's your commission, uh, we are appointed by you, we serve at your pleasure. Uh, proceeds from the book Loma Linda revert to the city. I have no idea how much has ever come in, um, but whatever, uh, royalty checks ever arrived from Arcadia Publishing go to the city. Uh, we anticipate Heritage Park, uh, generating revenue when commercial and professional space is restored and remodeled. We know JARB has worked very hard to try to secure funding to finish those restorations. And, uh, we do quite a bit of educational work. As chairman, I speak, uh, about once a month to some group somewhere about Loma Linda's history, and, um, our history fairs, with the exception of the last one, have been done all with private donations, and we thank the city for, uh, contributing some budget for last year's big celebration because it helped us to put on a, a very good program for our families and especially the children who would be educated there. So that's the end of my report, and I'm available for questions.
Quick question, and I'm not sure if you've been contacted with JARB regarding this, but, um, the county, uh, has notified us that they had some money of... but the county has notified us that they had some money available, and JARB had asked for some money that would be used for the Heritage Park. Do you happen to have an update on that? Are you aware of the fact that we've requested money to try to rehab some of those homes?
Yeah.
But I just wondered, are you aware of it?
Not that specific one, no. I know that...
Okay, well, this is new to you, then?
Yes, yeah, it's good news.
We are looking at $50,000.
Excellent.
And, and right now, the house is in the process of renovation, using the insurance money. They do all the work.
So, we were able to actually get $50,000 from the county?
That, what he saved, but I haven't...
Promise? You won't believe it until you get the check?
Exactly. That's why I haven't, haven't told him yet.
Well, that's, that's huge. That's great. So, anyway, we're moving forward to trying to rehab those houses, and that's...
Great. We have, we have an excellent vision for that, and I believe that can become an important part of a healthy community and, and one that respects its past and continues the education of future generations about our, about our history and our heritage.
Yeah, that's a wonderful park. It would be great to start being able to utilize it, so.
Thank you.
I'm just curious. I heard that when they did excavation prior to building the La Loma Credit Union, that they were digging up some artifacts and so forth. And, and my question is a broader one. When you discover artifacts, what happens to them? Are they collected in a warehouse someplace, and are they ever put on display, or are there any artifacts?
If, if that was done, that property was not annexed into Loma Linda at that time. So, I think if there was a cultural resource that's studied done, it was done under the auspices of San Bernardino County. We have very, very few artifacts. Mission Road Development got us a small cardboard box full of buttons and pottery shards and things like that. Usually, those are handled by the County Museum or by some other archiving agency. They're transferred from the care of the archaeologist who discovers them to somebody who can take care of them. We've never found anything really big, and I'm not sure what happened with the San Bernardino County artifacts.
We have, we have some of the toy that we found, and we displayed it in a lobby area right here.
That's about as safe as we can come up with without a museum.
I'm an amateur history buff, so it's, these things are interesting.
Yeah, I mean, we'd love to have a museum in Heritage Park at some point, but we're not ready to put anything there yet. Thank you.
Just appreciate your report and helping us refocus on some issues that maybe we lose sight of, and I love your stating one of your charges and mottos of being safeguard the unique city heritage that we have. And you really think about a phrase like that, and you know, so many things that that can encompass from geographic preservation, architectural preservation, institutional heritage, even as we've heard a little bit tonight, health heritage, and just to refocus and remind ourselves of the importance of those issues is very valuable, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is Parks, Recreation, and Beautification.
Kurt Swiger, Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman and Beautification also. I guess I didn't get the memo that told me I needed a presentation. Or maybe I left it in my suit pocket, you know? I just, this is just going to be short and sweet.
You'll just have to come up with a thousand words for every picture you miss.
We got a long way to go there. Okay. You know, we've come a long way from having a general park plan with no budget whatsoever to having JARB. Under JARB's guidance and direction, we have completed all of the projects that were on the park plan that was bought and paid for by the City. And in times when we were very low in funds, JARB has been very, very proactive and has obtained grants, and we have continued to complete projects that we'd have, would have never completed without his direction. He's done an excellent job in that capacity, and we thank him for all of his efforts and all of the work that he's put in to all the committees. We now meet bimonthly, and basically, we now are just reviewing requests for park usage. And our parks are very, very popular at this point in time. I mean, we've got some pretty serious challenges coming in front of us. We probably are going to be challenged heavily by some new litigation in water conservation. I mean, we've got a, a nice infrastructure of parks, and I know that it's costing us quite a bit to maintain that. And as our budget crunch gets tighter and tighter, it's going to be more difficult to continue to preserve what we have built up, and JARB's done a wonderful job doing this. I think our committee right now is at seven working individuals, and, I don't know, everybody has been on the committee for quite a long time. We've just returned, one of our committee members has just come back to us, and I guess, Mr. Brower, if you would like to join us at any point in the future, you could, you could do that. I mean, we get some pretty good participation on the Budget Committee. We'd like to invite you to come out and join us for the next meeting, or whenever it fits into your calendar. But we do go dark every other month, and lots of times in the summer, we might take two months off. Just depends on, depends on the, whatever is active. And if something does come up that's important, JARB will pull us together and get us into a meeting. And I think that's about it. Any questions?
It's nice to see you in City Hall.
Thank you. Wonderful to be here.
I do have one question, and that is, I understand from the description of, of your committee that it's focused on parks and trails and so forth, both maintenance and development. I guess I'm interested in knowing, as I drive around the city, I see other, I have other ideas about beautifying the city. Does that fall within the scope of your responsibility or interest?
Yes.
And maybe I need to attend one of your meetings as well.
We'd love it. It would be nice.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, we went over your idea at a last Park Committee meeting about beautification, about the hardscape, about the on-ramp and off-ramp. We did talk about it.
I'd be happy to come and share some other ideas and discuss them.
You know, in past years, we've even had beautification projects where we've gone out into the community and tried to clean up, and it's difficult to get people to volunteer to come on and help. It's unbelievably difficult. Back when the school, the academy, had this program where they had their students earn points, that was really nice, because they were out there really helping us. That worked really good, but it pretty much died off because there's just really no interest. Nobody will come on.
Maybe we can leverage some of the healthy community people.
There you go. There you go.
Kurt, I had a question, and I don't know, our fire chief may chime in on this. Have we brought up the artifact that we got from the 9/11 to the Parks Committee to look at putting it in a park?
Have we brought it?
Up to the Parks Committees? Wasn't that the plan, to bring it up to the Parks Committee?
They're actually getting a rendering, some, some design work.
Okay.
I think that's the intent. Informally, the city managers discussed bringing perhaps an application or presentation idea to that venue for some further discussion.
So, is it going through any particular committee? My understanding was it was going through Parks, but I could be wrong.
I think they're getting some design options, and I think they intend to bring it to a committee, and that's probably where they'll, where they'll go.
Who's doing the design? Who's doing all that?
The Firefighters Association.
I see.
Who was awarded the artifact from the New Jersey Port Authority.
I see.
Is actually working on that. I've recommended that they get some input from some of our historical people and then bring it to the Parks and Recreation and Beautification folks for input there as well. So, I think the thought is that there would be some input from people that know history, know how to articulate it and demonstrate it, and then the beautiful people.
Okay, thanks for the update on that.
That will be on the, on the path, I'll follow.
Okay. I think our biggest beautification was about a year ago, and we got rid of all those flashing lights at intersections.
JARB, do you think you could go out and find maybe another grant? We can get those lights back? They were so, they were so beautiful. Thank you.
Those intersections are so beautiful, we took about 100,000 pictures of them. Okay, next is Trails Development Committee, Mr. Walling.
My name is Jim Walling. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to come before you and report what we've been doing for quite a while under your direction and your predecessors at the Trails Committee. Trails Committee is a subcommittee of the City Council for the benefit of the audience and those watching maybe on the channel, and it's been successful in performing the functions assigned to it by successive City Councils. Its accomplishments reflect many long hours of study, debate, decision-making, and reporting to the councils, excuse me, to receive their approval and further instructions. The collective achievements of all concerned can be seen today in what is now our 1,700-acre South Hills Preserve. So, let's take a look and see what we have. This forward button. Okay. He's doing it from back there. Here you see, if I stay off the keyboard. Overview of the trails from the air. The 1,700 acres are south of, basically, Huron and Clearon to, they extend a little bit beyond the Riverside County line. The trail system here designated in red for Loma Linda. The yellow is the Redlands Trail System, which will connect to ours, and I'll address that a little bit later on. Little closer view, you'll see that we have designated each of the trails by color as to their difficulty. We've numbered them, so we have a legend, people that don't really know where they are, where they're going, or where they've been out there. And if you look real close, you can see the distance between points designated in the small numbers. Now, we'll go on, try and move this along. On the left top, you see what has become a really attractive entrance to the trail system. The Huldau Crooks, Huldau Crooks Trailhead, JARB has been successful there in getting this paved parking lot, along with a dog park, which helps to beautify the area. And then, he has also a map posted so that people who come into the community and don't really know what it's all about have a chance to see where they're going before they take off. That's the Huldau Crooks, Huldau Crooks Trailhead. You see the views from many of the trails. As you get out on the hills, you look over the city, you can see just really beautiful, beautiful, early in the morning especially, sparkling lights, snow on the mountains in season, the green hills in season. And within ten minutes, you can be in complete solitude, just walking up the trail from Huldau Crooks Park fairly, fairly level. On the left, you see a tunnel, again, thanks to planning, and JARB put it in as we, as he put the addition to the Mountain View Overpass. The trail along San Timoteo Creek now doesn't require a grade crossing at that point. You can go right under the bridge and go on down to the west end of the city limits. I will, I'll cover a little bit later on, some comments on how these trails were actually improved. You're looking in the upper right and lower right, along San Timoteo Creek, and that was just a little dirt road. It was just nothing that anybody would want to travel on, or run on, or hike on, but with JARB's help and vision and his ability to just, he has a sixth sense of knowing where to find grant money. So, we're able to improve and landscape the entire length of the San Timoteo Trail from city boundary to the west to city boundary to the east. In addition, doesn't show here, but we have some foot bridges, I guess that's it, that connect the north end of the city to the south end of the trail system. It was the old bridge on Beaumont Avenue that was divided in two and put up in two, two spots. So, as you can see, our South Hills Trails are the crosshodes of, crossroads of connecting trails with our surrounding communities. In addition to Redlands, wasn't shown here, but Marino Valley is now developing their trail system to connect with ours. Redlands and Beaumont to the east will connect with ours in San Timoteo Canyon and continue to the Low Desert and the Santa Rosa Mountains. From our trailhead at Huldau Crooks Park, again, with JARB's help, we have been able to access the Santa Ana River Trail and go to the ocean when a couple other cities complete their links. Though not a part of the South Hills Preserve, the trail that we show here along San Timoteo Creek within Loma Linda city limits has, as you saw, been paved landscaped and furnished with two foot bridges installed connecting the north end of Loma Linda with a trail system. Again, thanks to the expertise of JARB, most of this was completed with grant money at little or no cost to the city. So, what you see is what we already have at very economical expenditures. In addition to its part in making what you've seen here become a reality, the Trails Committee entertains both long-term and short-term goals. Our major long-term goals are the establishment of a second trailhead at the south terminus of Richardson Street, and the acquisition of the additional rights of way under our property to complete the final length of the trails system with connection to Scotch Lane and our existing city-owned trails. This will serve the west end of the city and more convenient access and work to relieve congestion at the Huldau Crooks Park Trailhead as user traffic increases, and we're seeing it increase very, very rapidly. We also have, as our long-term goal, the sustained upgrading and improvement of existing trails to benefit users of the Preserve, both for now and future generations. Some of our short-term goals are, of course, to install permanent identification signs designating each individual trail and trail junctions, and to update and publish a new rail, trails map with an accurate legend identifying the distances between points on the trails and code colored for steepness and difficulty, revising that somewhat, what you saw on the screen. These maps will be complete with general information and cautions to users of the trails. This promotional brochure, a map, is anticipated to be both informative and instructional, designed to attract folks to come into our town and take advantage of our unique and outstanding health and recreation facility. They benefit by upgrading their health and fitness level for free. The hills are busy most any time of day, and as the economy has declined, we've seen marked increase in the use of the hills for inexpensive recreation. This leaves more for family or individuals to spend on food, gas, and other things while in our city. Loma Linda, of course, increasingly benefits by the taxes on the money they spend while Tonight, I've asked one of the visionaries who many years ago recognized the value of the South Hills to our community and the need to protect them from development to say a few words about the goals of the Trails Committee on behalf of many of the residents in the west side of Loma Linda and what they would like to see provided there. He really could qualify not just as a father of the hills, but really the grandfather of the hills. So, Dr. Wayne Isaiah, would you come forward and say just a brief, brief few more words about the needs and wants of the folks in your area?
I actually don't feel that old, but it's really gratifying to see the new City Council for the first time that I've seen it, and to also know that, that our hills have all of the changes and things are a lot better shaped now than they were in 1990, when I was walking my dog at the end of Richardson Street and Artist Coobes, the former councilwoman, was circulating a flyer, and the flyer says, "Come to the City Council, they're going to build a road from Richardson Street through..." from Richardson Street through to Richie Canyon Road." And today, I just shudder to think what would happen if that had been the case. You wouldn't even be able to get in at the FMO. And there were no plans to connect to Barton Road, they were just gonna put it through. So we had a committee meeting with the, with the people that were involved, and their solution was that everybody that lives on Richardson Street should cut the shrubs down on their front yard. And that would allow them to see the traffic coming through, so they'd be able to back out of the driveways. So from that very grim start, we've gone through Measure B and Measure B and a City Council-sponsored compromise measure. And so where I started out was close Richardson to Richie Canyon Road. And right now, when I go to the end of Richardson Street, I see the, I see the trucks hauling out all of the stuff out of the basin there, and it's really gratifying to see that. That, of course, is really needed. I was standing at my property at six-thirty AM when the dam broke. And, and I could see the water coming up over the, over, up above the dam, and it was, it was a whole dam of sticks and debris there. And suddenly, it let loose, two to three feet deep, went right down Richardson Street. And I was torn between getting my camera and capturing it, or just stand there and watching. But really appreciate the interest of the, of the City Council and everything that has happened to, to maintain these hills. But we have not yet really made a legal entrance to the, to the trail system from Richardson Street. There are no trespassing zones at the end, and people are using it regularly because the landowners have been kind enough to, to allow use to continue. I viewed Leroy Hansberger's map, and I believe that he filed a, a development with the city which would go at the end of Richardson Street to a canyon to the southwest. And his development did not include closing off that, the access to the city property. The access and the trail that goes up Richardson Street is in a riparian area. Really, it's part of that flood control thing, you really couldn't, couldn't build in the riparian area anyway. And I personally would really like to see some way that the, that legal permanent access could be secured from the end of Richardson Street through to the city property. And I attended the last, or one of the last Trails Committee's meetings, and many, many people were there. I was very pleased to see the Trail Committee functioning so well. And, and as I looked at the map, there really isn't much distance between the end of Richardson Street. So I know money is short, several options to, to purchase some land. But the very bottom, bottom of the barrel option would be to get some sort of, of permanent right-of-way so that you could access the city lands legally and on a permanent basis.
Wayne, it's nice to see you back. Haven't seen you in a long time. You're one of the people that inspired me to run for council to begin with, so glad to see you back.
Okay.
Quick question, do we happen to know who are the actual landowners of the land at the end of Richardson?
I don't. The last that I heard from Leroy was that they sold it to a company that is centered in Phoenix, but...
So they were the owners at that time?
Yeah, Leroy Hansberger's group, I think the Emmerich Company owned it, and they have sold it. And I believe a company in Phoenix owns it, but we get to go down and do a land search and find out.
Well, we may have our city manager look into that to find out who the landowner is, so we can start discussing with them about acquiring right-of-way. Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Somebody will probably want to develop that if it's not owned. Obviously, the ideal would be if the city owned attractive land there to connect. And the, the obvious advantages would be you've got Huldau Crooks entrance, but sort of a loop going through. You don't have an entrance on the other side. And that would really, really tie the whole thing up and really, really be nice.
I think the idea of actually acquiring land, it's quite an obstacle right now, given the economy. But I think we definitely need to look into it to see what other options we have.
I, I just got a couple of healthy city comments. Everybody's talked about losing weight, and I'm a failure in that area. But I did drive my natural gas car over here tonight. And, and having a natural gas car has reduced my weekly expenses from thirty to forty dollars down to about fifteen dollars. Natural gas is a dollar forty a gallon in Riverside, and in Redlands, it's two-twenty-five a gallon. And instead of buying my natural gas in the city of Riverside and, and Redlands, I would love to buy it from the city of Loma Linda. And if you just think of what you're spending on gasoline for the city vehicles, if you dropped it by that amount, it'd be a tremendous savings.
What kind of car do you own?
I bought, I'm, I'm cheap, so I bought a Chevrolet Cavalier that's, that's about five or six years old. And it's actually a bi-fuel car. If I run out of natural gas, it switches to the gasoline automatically. But to tell you how clean that car is, carbon dioxide and water is all that comes out the exhaust. And you lift the dipstick up, it looks like apple juice.
So you only upset Al Gore with your, with your exhaust?
But what was that?
You only upset Al Gore because you put out CO2?
Yeah, that's right.
I, I have a flex fuel truck, and I'm curious to know where that place is in Riverside.
It's, it's right near the Riverside Auto Center. And when you get, when you get the Adams Off-Ramp, there's a little sign that says Alternative Fuel Site. And, and you end up driving into the city yard. And, and of course, it's a twenty-four-hour-a-day drive up, so serve yourself.
Credit cards, I assume.
Put your credit card in, and, and same way in Redlands. It's at Park and Tennessee in Redlands. There's a, there's a website called CNGprices.com. And if you go to CNGprices.com, it's like MapQuest. And a, a, the map comes up of your area, and you can zoom in or zoom out. And all the little red dots on the map are where the stations are at. When you click on a station, it gives you the address. And, and when you click on the address, it gives you a map and a picture of what it looks like. And most of them are city yards. Before you do that, the red spots have, have a price on them, so you can tell what the prices are. Nobody's more than two-fifty a gallon, and the cheapest is one-forty in Riverside. Anyway, thank you very much for all that you're doing and, and... Oh, the, the oldest artifact I know of is the one that, that Christiansen, the, I don't know if he's still on the planning commission. He had that, the cross. Have you seen the iron cross that he had? And he exhibited this at, at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. And it's a wrought iron cross that's this big and that, that high. And it has a pointed, a point on the bottom. And they dug it out of a tree over, over on Poplar Street, out of San Timoteo Creek, a number of years ago. And it had a little bit of gilding still on it. And he had it researched, and what they think it is, is that it was an instant church where one of the old padres, like the San Bernardino Assistencia, would go around, visit with the group. And they'd stick that cross in the ground, and they'd have an instant church. And that's the oldest, best artifact that I've ever seen. We photographed it, and Bob Ziprick photographed it, and I don't know if he still owns it. But something like that belongs to, belongs to the city. I'd be willing to donate something if you could find it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Isaiah. We always value and appreciate you, but we've wandered a little far afield from just the trails. Nevertheless, it's interesting. I'd like to take just a minute to express my thanks and gratitude to the many, many individuals who have been or are members of the Trails Committee and its various subcommittees over the years. They're too numerous really to mention my name here, but they deserve our heartfelt thanks and gratitude. And I'd like to especially thank you, our council members, who continue to support the enhancement of the South Hills Preserve. Obviously, you've been quick to recognize its current and potential financial advantage to the city in these difficult financial times. And Ovi, I really take to heart what you said. Remember, I listed that acquisition of land as a long-term goal. I may not live that long, but you will. One individual, meeting with the committee, who has kept us focused financially and focused on realistic goals, is our city manager. Jarb has seldom missed a meeting over the years. He has guided us toward the achievable and away from wasted effort on unrealistic goals. Without his help, much of what we enjoy in the South Hills Preserve today would not have been possible. And for the benefit of those who are not aware, Jarb has additionally, over the past ten years, upgraded our community's appearance remarkably. I can remember running the streets of Loma Linda ten years ago, and I remember very clearly what they looked like. You dodged puddles, you had no curbs and gutters, you, the streets were broken up and half-paved and half-notted in many areas. Without fanfare, he has done this beautification job while staying within budgets with dollars well-spent. And sometimes, as I mentioned before, at no cost at all to the city with grants and other funds. It really isn't hard to tell where you are when you drive into Loma Linda. The streets are smooth and well-maintained. There are concrete sidewalks, curbs and gutters. Flowers, trees, and shrubs are abundant everywhere, from the landscape center dividers to the parks and parkways. And, and a lot of credit goes to the Parks and Recreation Committee as well. We enjoy paved and landscaped parking lots, tennis courts, and now an outstanding trailhead entrance at Huldau Crooks Park, soon to be officially opened. Beauty really abounds everywhere in Loma Linda. Just compare it to the surrounding cities, and you'll see. In addition, Jarb has personally assisted and supervised the installation of the trail markers and much more beyond the call of duty, mostly on his own time. You're his boss, you ought to know that. The Trails Committee members want to take this opportunity to publicly thank him for all he has done and continues to do for the South Hills Preserve and the trail system and beautification of the city. And as council members, you have to share in the credit and appreciation, along with the preceding councils spanning the last twenty-plus years. With your blessings and support, the Trails Committee will continue to serve you as we're instructed in progressing toward our mutual goals. And I really want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and, and give a report and kind of make the community aware of what's really happening out there in those dusty old hills. Dusty.
One of the things I was wondering about is, you know, you get these GPS programs on phones and whatnot. Is there any possibility of feeding to the people who populate those with, with the trail map? And because, you know, it'd be kind of nice to know where you are. You wouldn't need a map, you could just follow your GPS. But I'm sure there are many different services that do that.
I'm certain that's pop, that's possible and very probable it's gonna come up. But I'm not the IT person. We need an IT person on the Trails Committee.
I think all we'd have to do is talk to somebody at ESRI.
Okay.
And just plant the seed.
If that's an assignment, we'll do it.
Before you leave to your seat, just a couple of questions. You talked about revising and updating the trail maps. When do you anticipate that'll be completed? And I assume those will be readily available in hard copy as well.
Oh, yeah. We, just as soon as we can put it together and sell the sponsorship, so we can pay for it. Because we know very well to come back to you and say, "We want some more money to do that," where they're gonna say, "Well, where are we gonna find that?" But that's, that's a short-term goal, and we've been addressing that the last, you know, three or four meetings. We can appoint, if you'd like to see that expedited, we can get a subcommittee going and really crank that up.
The other question, I just want, point of clarification, to be sure I understood you. That with a little more trail development by surrounding cities like Colton, that we'll be able to jump on my bicycle and ride from here to the beach.
Yeah, Jarb can probably tell you.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the county, San Bernardino, is in the process of preparing a plan for Phase Three of Santa Ana River Trail. And I have a plan in my office. Yes, and eventually you get on Santa Ana River Trail and ride your bike all the way to the beach.
That's great.
Just don't do it at night.
You, you could start right up at Huldau Crooks Park as soon as they put those links together. Jarb's got the connection to the Santa Ana Trail right straight down to the north.
My problem is I think it'd be fun to ride to the beach, I'm not sure I'd get back.
I had to call somebody and have them pick me up one year.
It's still faster than the ninety-one.
Thank you.
When you mentioned GPS, it turned me on to, there's a book written by a history teacher, La Sierra, called Rockhanding, the Wiley Well District. And I like to collect rocks and agate and so whatnot. And these, this is a district south of those prisons out by White. It's a vast area. And when you, and when I got his book, he'll, instead of saying, "You go three miles and turn right, you should go to GPS coordinates, turn right, you'll see a rock, and then you turn at the rock, and you go over, and there's a little bush on the right at GPS, such and such." So, so I've seen that done in a book, and it's, and it's, and it's very valuable. Be happy to show it to you. The other thing is that, that if, if a person could look at the trails on Google Earth, if you put the mouse right on any particular spot, the GPS coordinates are, are displayed down at the bottom. And it's really accurate. I can tell the southwest corner of my house, the northwest corner, and you can get the coordinates. So that was an excellent idea.
One more.
Just to make a couple of quick comments, just want to emphasize, I do agree totally with Dr. Isaiah. A key goal that we need to have is to get that trailhead on Richardson. Our access really is incomplete with that, and really appreciate you bringing that up. It's also fun and worthwhile as a community to sometimes just look back at things and bringing up, you know, where we've ended up with our preservation of the hills and trails, tremendous amount of effort, a lot of individuals, appreciate especially Dr. Isaiah's role. And you look at, you know, those twenty years, we had the Dignio Park and part of Crooks Park, and that was basically it. And since that time, we've added all the South Hills Preserve, we've added the Little League Fields, we've added the Bailey Park, we've added the landscape area down along the power lines. Just shows what a vision by the community and all the people involved can accomplish and really speaks to everyone's efforts and what we've accomplished over the last number of years. And it's exciting to see.
Okay, our next item is eleven B. We have some appointments to Budget Committee, Senior Center Board, and Trails Development Committee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I just, first item.
On the Budget Committee, we have one position vacant, and we also have one application by Mr. Vern Miller, who would like to be on the Budget Committees, and his application is in the papers.
Can you remind us, because we're revisiting this issue because last time we didn't have enough applicants? Was there a vacancy on this committee at that time, too? Do you guys know?
Yes.
The Budget Committee?
Robert, last name, resigned.
Mr. Pendleton and I think Mr. Fitzsimmons have both resigned.
So you just limit the committee?
And we have one appointment and we have one vacancy.
And rather than closing it out, we extended the time for an application, and we've received one. Is there any pleasure on that application?
I'll move it. Will we accept the application and appoint Vern Miller to the Budget Committee?
I'll second.
Is there any comment? Is there any objection? Hearing none, he is appointed. Moved to the Senior Center Board.
We have, we have one vacancy, but we don't have any application for, for the Senior Center. So staff recommend that...
It says recommend a point one, but we don't have an application. So should we just keep that one open, or? I know Pam's preference is to close out the one seat.
The scope of the Senior Center Board has, has changed considerably from when the board was first established. And Joanne Heimler from the Administration Office now manages the Senior Center with volunteers. And the board basically looks at uses of the Senior Center and meets quarterly. But there are only four members so far, so you usually like to have an odd number for voting, but...
Do they ever have controversial votes?
Not usually.
The board, the board was established when they about to build the Senior Center, and since then, we completed the buildings.
Does it have any real purpose at all?
It, it only meets to discuss the Senior Lunches Program and just any other activities. Lunches program and just any other activities, but is that-
Don't they approve applications?
Is that handled by staff?
Y- yes, staff is actually managing the Senior Center.
So, you know, I'm not in favor of, uh, you know, there's, some people have said the only, the only, uh, thing with eternal life is a government program. Um, and I'm not in favor of eternal life or government program, so is this something that maybe you should sunset?
Well, we have, uh, one committee member here, so Doug, do you want to say?
But he's moving to another committee.
Doug Ziprick, uh, live in the community here on Orange Grove Street, member of the Senior Citizens, uh, Center Board. And right now, we're looking at the different ways of raising additional funds for helping with a number of the programs that are going on there. So there's a number of activities that are going on by the Senior Center Board members at the present time.
Okay, so you, you believe it's a board that's active and has a sufficient task that it should continue to exist?
It's, it's, uh, busy with a number of activities that, uh, that, uh, um, yeah-
Joanne.
Yeah, Joanne, uh, has, uh, outlined two and different ones, they're working on the different projects for her.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that.
I propose we leave that fifth position open as to which time we get an applicant to fill it. In that way, you can maintain a, an odd number of members on the board for voting.
Yeah, I think we can just advertise it once a year or something like that so you don't have to keep it up all the time. Thank you. Okay, we go to Trails Development and in that case, we had two members that it was ambiguous whether they wanted to serve further and it looks like Levy Uembeer wants to continue and Jonathan Zirkel's unreachable. So there's also an application from Mr. Ziprick, or Dr. Ziprick for a position on the Trails Committee. So we have before us two reap- a reappointment and a new appointment.
The, uh, Mr. Su- Jonathan's, I can't remember his last name.
Zirkel.
Zirkel. Uh, he has, he has not been attending the meeting for the past, what, year? And a long time, so, so I, I recommend that, uh, we remove him from the committee members and, and, uh, and see if you want to approve, uh, Dr. Ziprick's on the, on the committees.
Yeah, I don't think it would require official, official removal because his term expired, so.
I move we appoint, uh, Dr. Ziprick and, uh, Mr. Imbar to the Trails Development Committee.
I second that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, you're appointed, congratulations. And it says here that you, in your bio, that you've hiked all the trails. I'm impressed. I've, I've hiked a few of those trails and, boy, those things are tough. It is not easy. Uh, yeah, riding to the beach isn't easy neither. Okay, we go to our reports of councilmen.
Uh, there is an item and I just noticed that our chamber president is in the audience and I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak, but not if, in case anyone's watching, just remind everybody about our fair coming up, uh, in October.
Well, thank you, Ovi. I'm always just happy to talk about what the Chamber of Commerce is doing. We are having, uh, our forty-eighth, can you believe it? We've had forty-eight of these parades. Uh, of, I didn't have gray hair back then. At any rate, we're having the Forty-Eighth Annual Parade and Fair, Sunday, October sixteenth. Of, of the parade, as you know, begins at Barton Road and Anderson at ten o'clock, goes down to, uh, uh, the academy where the fund is not in. It only gets better with the fair, uh, uh, down at the parade. I am hoping that we can have each one of our council at, dur- in our parade. I hope you heard that, Stan. But, uh, uh, we're hoping that, uh, you will all be with us and that, uh, we're going to get ve- uh, uh, we're going to get vehicles for you and, uh, I think the, the, the citizens like seeing you in the parade and seeing who our leaders are. And if we could get Jarb out there, Jarb, Jarb would be wanting to get out there, you know, he's not the type of guy that likes to be out front, but if he could be there, you guys could be there. So, uh-
Councilman Daley mentioned something about a bicycle. Can you?
Sure, you could be on a bicycle, you could be on anything you want. But it's a fun time for our city to just, it's a day to feel good about the city. And it's, it's a day to feel good that you are a, a, a Lomalindian. So those of you that are listening, uh, on TV, uh, please come out and line the parade route. Or if you want to get a, in as, any kind of entry i- i- in, into the parade, we're always looking for that. And then, of course, businesses down at the fair can have booths down, uh, at the fair. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to let me ta- uh, talk about that and we hope that everybody comes out and just has a good time. Thank you.
Conrad, quick question. Will that building be open at the academy by then, do you know? Okay, because that'd be an exciting thing for the community to see the opening of the large addition to the academy.
I, uh, to answer that question, I, not to speak for Mary Morgan, but I asked her that in our last parade meeting. And it's very iffy whether that will actually happen or not.
Looks good from the outside.
Since Mr. Carlisle, uh, mentioned me by name, I will respond. Um, I have been frustrated with my schedule and the scheduling of the parade over the years. My professional society has their one annual meeting every year in the middle of October and three quarters of all the parades have always conflicted with that. I am actively involved with that as part of my other job, uh, as a delegate to that society. And again, this year, it's that same weekend, uh, and into the next week in Chicago. I wish somehow one of the two groups could change the time, but, uh, hasn't occurred. So I will apologize, uh, due to professional obligations, not be here, but it is a great event and I've enjoyed it, uh, um, every time I have participated and, uh, save that car for Jarb, let's put him in it.
We can always, uh, have one of your effigies on the-
I'm sure some would be very willing to do that.
Any other comments from the councilmen? No updates on our beloved airport or?
Keep reading the paper, but don't believe everything you read.
Okay, any reports of officers? Okay, then we are adjourned. We move to the redevelopment.
There is one, one thing I should point out. Thursday morning at ten o'clock, I believe it is, is the grand opening, uh, or the groundbreaking, I should say, of the SBX system. Uh, that's the express bus that will carry passengers between, um, Cal State, San Bernardino and the VA Hospital. And it'll have a part and a role in Loma Linda and Jarb, you can probably describe a little bit about the impact on Loma Linda better than I. Anyway, SBX grand opening downtown, uh, uh, San Bernardino in front of City Hall there.
Yes, at E and Court Street.
Right.
Okay, if that's it, then we're adjourned. The RDA is next.
Call to order the redevelopment agency. Uh, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Uh, for our participation, any member of the community that wishes to speak on any items that's not on the agenda, you can do so at this time. Seeing none, uh, there are no conflicts of interest. Going on to non-item number one-
Move the minutes.
-of August the twenty-third.
Second.
Hearing a first and a second, it so passes. Item number two, recognized obligation payment schedules, ROPS. Uh, do you want to add anything, Diane? No?
This is just part of our, um, whole thing that's going on with the, the state, um, the ABX, ABX one, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And this is part of the, the recognized obligations will only come into play if we are, if the Supreme Court does not allow us to continue or under those circumstances, the successor agency would use the scheduled payment.
These are the payments that we would be making to the state?
Well, any vendor. There's, there's other taxing agencies, there's, there's some payments to ourselves for, for the, some operational fees, so most of, the bulk of those debt service and-
So this is in addition to the amount the state wants us to pay as the ransom?
Actually, this would only come into play if we are not allowed to continue.
I see.
So, so if the Supreme Court finds twenty-seven unconstitutional, then we go into dissolution.
And then make this payment while they'll take over. I see.
And then the successor agency, which we will have a seat on, will come in and this will be the obligations we pay off.
And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm reading this correctly, it's about six million dollars a year? Is that what I'm reading? Okay.
I move the ROPS.
Second.
Hearing no opposition, it so moved. Uh, any reports? Hearing none. We are adjourned until our next council meeting, which will be when? October, October thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.